Good.
You know, I wasn't sure what kind of song to sing. I didn't know if, you know, either, you know, a little more temporary or him.
Whatever you want.
So I went with, you know, you ever heard the song Chainbreaker by Zach, I think it was Zach Williams? That's the song he's singing today. Didn't work. If you've been walking the same old road for miles and miles, if you've been hearing the same old voice, tell the same old lies. If you're trying to fill the same old holes inside, there's a better life. There's a better life. If you've got pain, he's a pain taker. If you feel lost, he's a way maker. If you need freedom or saving, he's a prison shaking savior. If you've got change, he's a chain breaker. We've all searched for the light in the day and night. We've all found ourselves worn out from the same old fight. We've all run to things we know it just ain't hiding. There's a better life. There's a better life. If you've got pain, he's a pain taker. If you feel lost, he's a way maker. If you need freedom or saving, he's a prison shaking savior. If you've got change, he's a chain breaker. If you believe it, if you receive it, if you can feel it, somebody testify. If you believe it, if you receive it, if you can feel it, somebody testify. If you've got pain, he's a pain taker. If you feel lost, he's a way maker. If you need freedom or saving, he's a prison shaking savior. If you've got change, he's a chain breaker. If you need freedom or saving, he's a prison shaking savior. If you've got change, he's a chain breaker. Thanks, you're done.
Now I'm gonna make y'all sing with me. That makes it easier. Oh, you like singing, I don't want to hear it. Alright, we are gonna go for thirty-seven, page thirty-seven, How Great Thou Art. I told, we sing Old School and New School, so. I like it all.
We did too.
Ready? You know that song? Page thirty-seven. I gotta figure out what key I'm in, sorry. I didn't have time to practice today, y'all go find out. Okay, there I am. Oh Lord my God, when I in awesome wonder, and see the whole, the world thy hands have made. I see the stars, I hear the rolling thunder, thy power throughout, the universe displayed. When sings my soul, my Savior God to thee. How great thou art, how great thou art. When sings my soul, my Savior God to thee. How great thou art, how great thou art. And when I think that God is Son of a sparing, sent him to us, I searched and taken him. Then on the cross, I buried gladly buried, he fled and died to take away my sin. When sings my soul, my Savior God to thee. How great thou art, how great thou art. When sings my soul, my Savior God to thee. How great thou art, how great thou art. When Christ shall come, with shout of adoration, and take me home, what joy shall fill my heart? When I shall bow in humble adoration and their own praise, my God, how great thou art. When sings my soul, my Savior God to thee. How great thou art, how great thou art. When sings my soul, my Savior God to thee. How great thou art, how great thou art. Y'all sing beautifully.
It's likely you've heard this song before.
Once or twice.
Alright, well I'll pray and then you can take the kids. Father, we thank you so much for this opportunity to gather together, to study your Word, to meet one another that we are family with but don't, didn't know yet. And, uh, Lord, we just ask that you would be with us tonight as we do study your Word and as we join together as the church, and we just enjoy you because of how great you are, and we thank you, Lord, that you've redeemed us through your Son Jesus, because it's in his name we pray, amen. We're gonna be in Acts, chapter thirteen. We have a minute for everybody to get settled. We can take up these books if you want. Alright, Acts chapter thirteen, everybody there? We're getting all squared away, everybody can kinda gear. We kinda keep it really informal, so, uh, the way I like to do our, we call this our Bible study, uh, because we're not really doing a full-on worship service yet. But, I kinda go through it like I'm preaching, but if you have a question, stop him, it's okay. Um, at the end, I'll have a few questions and that'll create some discussion and we can kinda talk about that. Uh, but we've been going through the book of Acts, and we're in Acts chapter thirteen now. We've just spent several times together talking about persecution in Acts chapter twelve, because that is a transition chapter. From chapter one through twelve, you see the church mainly focused there in Jerusalem, mostly focused on the, the main character would be Peter. Uh, at chapter thirteen, things shift, and you'll see everything move from Jerusalem to Antioch, and the main character changes over to Paul. And there's a few things that are going, that's going on there, but it's, this is really just a new, uh, a new section. Uh, if you'll remember a few chapters back, I said Acts chapter, or it would be Acts part two. This is really Acts part three, uh, which it really kinda brings it to the, the climax of the story. And so, as we're looking at this transition, we're gonna see a few things happen, there's a change in location, as I said. We moved from Jerusalem church to the church at Antioch, uh, being the main point of interest. You see the change in the main character with Peter and Paul. Uh, the rest of this is gonna focus on Paul's missionary journeys. He has three of them where he goes and he does different things. And so we're gonna see some of that. But there's also a change in focus. Uh, if you'll remember, I said there were three themes to the book of Acts, right? So theme number one is the gospel expansion. That's, we see the gospel explode from just a group of twelve guys to the entire known world. And so there's the gospel expansion, that's one of the themes that you see there in Acts. There's the enemy attacks, how there's persecution from the outside, and there's some turmoil on the inside of the church. Uh, you see some of that in the book of Acts, but then there's also organizational, organizational structure. You start to see things start to take place, um, as far as the way the church is being set up. Uh, and so as we go through that, we're gonna continue to see all three themes. We're gonna see Paul's missionary journeys, uh, see the gospel expand. We're still gonna see internal and external attacks from the enemy, but we're gonna also start to see a development of a consistent organizational structure. Uh, and, and I'll explain all that as we, as we go through it. But, uh, tonight I just wanna focus on the call for Paul as he starts his missionary journey. So we're only gonna read four verses tonight. Acts chapter thirteen, looking at verse one, says, "Now in the church at Antioch there were prophets and teachers, Barnabas, Simeon called Niger, Lucius of Cyrene, Manay, Manain, a close friend of Herod the Tetrarch, and Saul. As they were worshiping the Lord and fasting, the Holy Spirit said, 'Set apart for me Barnabas and Saul, for the work to which I have called them.' Uh, then, after they had fasted, prayed, and laid hands on them, they sent them off." And so that's the, that's, yeah, that's the calling that we see of the apostle Paul and Barnabas to go out and, and start the journey that uh, he is most famous for. Uh, and so as we look at this, there's, 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 I wanna start with this idea. A lot of times we look at this verse, or we look at this set of verses, and we think that happened like tonight. Like, we're just all gathered here together, and then the Holy Spirit manifests and says, "Set aside Jeremiah and Barry for the work that I have for them." But this isn't, that's not really what was going on. This is not just like a one-time, it happened all in one worship service. This was something that developed over time. As Barnabas and Paul were work, were working in that church, uh, you're gonna see that that's how this comes about. And, and the reason we can, we can say that, sorry, a firecracker going off. The reason we can say that is because it's talking about worshiping and fasting, and that's not something you do just one time. This is something that was a continual practice, and so this is something that has developed out of the church. And so, there's a few things that I wanna share with you that I think are important for us to understand about Paul's calling, Paul and Barnabas' calling to this, uh, that'll help us kinda wrap our head around the reason these four verses are here. Number one, we need to remember the connection to a local church. Right? So this calling grows out of the local church in Antioch. And one of the distinctives of our culture is individualism. We like to be our own, we like to stand by ourself. But biblical Christianity is not an individual endeavor. It's a team sport. Uh, there's no spectators, there's no I. It, we're meant to be together, and so in the, in the body of a local church is where this grows out of. And so our faith is one of community, cooperation, and collaboration. That's why, to be here where we are, we have multiple churches that are, that are supporting us and, and making that possible, because it wasn't just KJ and Sharon that decided one day, "You know what, we're gonna move and do this." It grew up out of something else. And so, uh, there's some things that I think give you to notice about this connection to the local church. First off, notice the leadership of the church. So he says here, "In the church there were prophets and teachers," and then he lists some of them, and there's some things that we can notice here. First off, there's multiple leaders. It's not just one person who is the, the god of the church and says, "It's my way or the highway, this is my church and this is what I'm doing." There's a plurality of people who are leading, okay? That's a good thing to see. You don't just have just one personality that dominates of people here. Uh, we know about Barnabas, he came from Cyprus and, and had traveled down to Jerusalem. He had been at the church in Jerusalem and was sent to Antioch to kinda help that church out. Uh, at the very end, you see Saul, we know that he grew up and was a very devout Jew, uh, and had a miraculous, uh, encounter with Jesus and changed his life. But also look at a couple of these others. You have Simeon who was called Niger. Now, most people believe that, that he was from Africa. He was, he was a dark-skinned person, uh, who was in that place, and it was, that, that, who called, who was called Niger. The reason for that was to differentiate him from other Simons, because that was a pretty common name. And then you have this Lucius from Cyrene. Uh, and then you have this other person, Manain, who was a close friend of Herod the Tetrarch. You have quite the diversity of people here who are the leaders of that church. It's not just one type of people. Uh, I remember when I was doing leadership things, uh, I was told that, uh, if you don't have somebody who is willing to challenge you, then you were, you just surrounded yourself with a bunch of yes men, or you, or people who are just gonna go along with it. So you, you wanna create some, some diversity, people who disagree with you, people who may have a different viewpoint around you. And so, there's multiple leaders, there's diverse, diversity in the leadership, but there's also complementary roles. We're gonna see this come out later with Paul and Barnabas, but their personalities are different. Uh, and so, the reason I bring that up is because even though they're different, and it kinda goes with that diversity, it's a complementarian type of different. So Paul is, is, is one way, and we're gonna see that Paul is, is pretty adamant after the first missionary journey that they not take this one particular person with them again. Barnabas, on the other hand, has the personality of grace, and he says, "No, I think we need to give him a second shot, I think, I think we can do it." And so there's a disagreement between the two of them. But most of those roles are complementary of, of one another. Where I'm weak, somebody else may be strong, where they're weak, I may be strong, and so we're able to complement one another and we're able to, to bring that around. So, that's the leadership of the church. Also, notice the activities of the church. It says, "As they were worshiping, worshiping the Lord and fasting," the Holy Spirit said. So we have worshiping, and we have fasting. The church was active, they were doing, they weren't just sitting around waiting. Start doing what you can and be faithful in what God has led you to already, and already provided for thus far. You see, a lot of people say, "I don't even wanna start because I can't have exactly what I want at the end." No, we're supposed to just be doing what God tells us to do right now, be faithful right now. If he just gives you a little bit, be faithful in that right now. You never know what the Lord may decide to do out of that. So the church, what did they know they were supposed to be doing? Well, worshiping, fasting, they were supposed to be doing those things, and so they were doing those things. Obviously, they had teachers, they had prophets who were preaching, uh, sharing the, the, the news and the, and connecting Jesus to the Old Testament for them and the scriptures, and teaching them how that was there, teaching them how to live as Christians. And so they were doing all that, they were already active, doing what they were supposed to be doing. But then, after worshiping and fasting, notice that there's a recognition of a calling of Barnabas and Saul. It says, "The Holy Spirit said, 'Set apart for me Barnabas and Saul, for the work that I've called them to.'" So then it says, "Then after they fasted, prayed, and laid hands on them, they sent them out." So, the church was worshiping and fasting, but then they also recognized that some of them, Barnabas and Paul, were called to something different. God was calling them to something. So I don't believe that this was a paranormal appearance of the Holy Spirit. I think it was, it was more of a common understanding, a passion to see other people come to Christ, a general impression on the people as they read scripture, as they study, as they pray, and as they worship. They recognized, this person, these two guys have a special talent, a special gift, and God has called them to something. That's the way it normally works in the church. You know, somebody shows that they have an aptitude for teaching or preaching or something like that, the church is, the church's role is to say, "You seem to be called to something, we're supposed to call out the call." And say, "The Lord's doing something in your life if you consider, you know, what the Lord might be calling you to." Or maybe it's not a call to ministry in that sense, but maybe it's a call to a, 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 a place of service in the church, or maybe whatever it may be. It may be all kinds of things. That's one of the questions that's gonna come up a little bit later. But the church needs to help recognize where people are gifted and help them move in those directions. And that's what Paul, uh, and Barnabas got from the church in Antioch there. There's also a commissioning or an ordination, uh, uh, if you would like to call it that. But this is a specific moment where the church recognizes Paul and Barnabas, that's verse three. "Then after they had fasted and prayed, they laid hands on them and sent them off." That's a particular moment when the church says, "We recognize God's call on your life, we're making a commitment to support you, to pray for you, to care for you, and now we're sending you off." Now, I'm not gonna go all into the details of those three specific things, but those are, those are things that a church needs to be doing. They need to be recognizing where God's using people and calling them to their place of service. We need to be, um, committing to helping them, whether that be training, or sending them, or, or financially supporting them, or, or praying for them, whatever that may be. But then there's also this sending. There's a time, like, I, I get in trouble all the time because I say, "One of my goals for my children is that they move out of my house." Right? Because what that means as a dad is that I've raised a young man who is capable of living on his own and leading his own family. I don't wanna create a burden on society, right? And so, this is the same thing in the church. You see, I think a lot of times people just like to crowd, crowd more and more people in the church when they're actually called to be sent out, and we need to, we need to give them a little oomph to go and to do that. So the church here is, is, is the church that is Paul and Barnabas' sending church, and this is the church he returns to after his missionary journeys. And so that's the connection to the local church. But I also want you to see that there's a particular calling that they have. As I mentioned, there's a shift in focus from this point forward, specifically what we see is a shift from focusing on the messianic Israelites, the people in Jerusalem, the Jewish people that, that, that would understand where Jesus came from, to the Gentile world, the people outside of Jerusalem, outside of that. And we're gonna see a, a shift in that, but I want you to see two distinct characteristics here. Uh, one of the things that we're gonna see is a, a strategic church starting plan. What we, what we see when we go forward is that Paul had a plan, he wasn't just winging it. The spread of the gospel to this point had really not been planned or intentional. If you know the book of Acts, you'll know that the church was in Jerusalem and then persecution came down on them that made them spread out, and they went to these different places. Uh, and as they were going, they shared the gospel, but that's not very strategic, it's just kinda like, you know, spreading it out. Uh, if you know anything about farming, uh, you know, there, there's simple broadcasting, you just throw it in there and throw seeds. Well, how successful is that? Most of the time, what you do is you have a strategic plan, you either use the drills, or you use planters, or whatever, and you put it in a specific place so that you know what's, what's going on, and it, and it serves a better purpose. So, we're gonna start to see a plan, his particular call is a strategic plan to share the gospel and to move it beyond. But there's also another one that's connected here, and you already know this one, but I just wanna point it out for clarity's sake. Paul writes a majority of the New Testament books. Right? The letters, Paul writes those. One of his traveling companions is Luke, who actually writes most of the words in the New Testament. If you take Luke in Acts, that's more words than the rest of the New Testament. And so between Paul and his, his traveling companion Luke, they write a good portion of the New Testament. The situations that arise from new Gentile believers in these major cities becomes the backdrop for Paul's letters. And so even though there's this strategic plan for church planning, God has also had this underlying plan to write his word that we have now, so that we can have it. And so there's, there's, there's a phrase that I learned, um, just a few weeks ago, I had never heard it before, but it really makes a lot of sense, and I think I wanna share it with you, as we talk about Paul's letters and, and being part of the calling. So part of what God's gonna do here is share the gospel with the Gentiles and plant all these churches, but it's also carrying with it this intention to write the word of God. And so the Bible is not an authoritative set of books, it is a set of authoritative books. And so what that means is, nobody said, "These are the authority, this, this, this list of books is the authority." Those books rose up from all the other things that had been written at that time, and the church recognized, "These are the authoritative books," and they put them together. And so Paul's letters rose to the top. There are probably some other letters that didn't make the cut. But these letters, and these, these, this gospel and this, this book of Acts, rose to the top by the early church. They recognized that that was authoritative, and that was what they needed to continue to go, and that was part of the calling that you see here. If Paul had not done what he, what he had done with the church's planting, I don't think the writing would have been the same as it is now. So, that leads us to the last point, and that is the ones being called. This could've been much earlier, but I wanted to share it here because this leads to the discussion questions that we can talk about. Paul, who used to be Saul, I think right here it still calls him Saul, doesn't it? Yep. So the apostle Paul was Saul, had a, an amazing supernatural experience with the Lord Jesus. He had grown up as a devout Jew and was persecuting the church, but he met Jesus on the road to Damascus. Uh, and then he spends about fourteen years learning and growing in the faith. You know, a lot of people don't realize that, when we read the New Testament, a lot of times we forget to put the time back in it. You know, it, it covers a, a long span of time, and we forget to remember that, that we're, we're looking at a long time span here. But fourteen years from the time that he became a Christian to the time that Barnabas went and got him from Tarsus. And he was learning, and he was growing, and he was, he was figuring things out, and he was trying to, to, to understand what all of this meant. And so, as he grows, he finally reaches a point where Barnabas goes to Tarsus to get him, to help with the church in Antioch. We're gonna talk about Barnabas in a second, but he's sent from the church in Jerusalem to help the church in Antioch. He gets there, notices there's a lot of Gentiles, and he really doesn't know what to do with them. He's like, "Hey, this Paul has been living in Tarsus," and he, you know, he might, he, he probably knows, and goes up there, gets him, and they come back and they're teaching the church and they're doing all that kinda stuff. So, Paul had, had been prepared for this. Barnabas, on the other hand, or not the other hand, but Barnabas, uh, originally from Cyprus, he was searched, first seen at the church in Jerusalem. Does anyone remember where the first place we see Barnabas is in Jerusalem? Correct, he sold all of his stuff and gave everything to the church. He was right before the story where God kills two people for lying about their stuff. Remember that story? Right before that, Barnabas had done that. He was an example of somebody who was giving everything to the church for the support, where this is, they had all where they had all things in common. And so, that's the first place we see Barnabas. And then, the second place we see him, he pops up when the Apostle Paul has now been saved. So Saul, who's been persecuting the church, he was there at the stoning of Stephen. He was... He had letters from the high priest in the Sanhedrin to go up to Damascus and grab Christians and bring them back and hold them accountable. That's when he met Jesus. A persecutor of the church comes back to Jerusalem, walks into the headquarters of the church and says, "I'm a Christian." How do you think that went? They're like, "Right." We'll see. Barnabas was the guy that said, "Hey, let's give him a shot." He was known as the encourager. Barnabas was the guy who would come alongside somebody and show them grace and to try and help them and guide them and use them, and he was the type of person who was your motivator, your number-one cheerleader who was right there to say, "Let's get this done." And so, he is. He's the guy that goes and gets Paul, who was in Tarsus, and says, "I think you're useful to the ministry. Come on, let's go to this church in Antioch. They need somebody who knows some things that you've been studying and dealing with, and I think you can help us." And so, the two of them had been serving and preaching in Antioch. They'd been teaching, preaching in Antioch, teaching, helping the people live like Christians there in Antioch. And then, this is when the Lord calls them to something different. They were commissioned by the Antioch church to take the offering to Jerusalem. Remember that? There's somebody who came and said that there's a famine in the land, and so the church in Antioch takes up an offering and says, "We're going to send Paul and Barnabas to take that to Jerusalem." So they've already been trusted by the church to do something, and so now they're back, and then they get this particular call. So here's a couple of things to consider about these two men. Neither one of them is one of the original disciples, right? So we got the original disciples. We've seen them come up, a couple of them killed, but now we're seeing another generation kind of coming up. Barnabas, Paul. I think Paul's a unique situation. That's a whole nother topic of discussion. But neither one is one of the original disciples, but they're also the ones that were sent to Antioch to help Antioch. If you'll remember, the church in Antioch was preaching the gospel to the Gentiles. Gentiles were getting saved, and they didn't really know what to do or how to handle that. The church in Jerusalem's like, "Hey, Barnabas, go check out what's going on up there and let us know." So he was sent from Jerusalem, then Barnabas goes and gets Paul. So both of these guys are there. They were the ones sent to help the church in Antioch, and they were helping the church in Antioch. They were doing things. And we don't have all the details of what was going on particularly at that time and how much they were doing, but you see that they're raising up some leaders, the church is growing, things are going well. But then, all of a sudden, the Holy Spirit leads everybody to believe that they are called to a different type of ministry. And so, this experience, I believe, prepared them for what God is getting ready to send them to. I think that's something that we all really need to grasp. I've been using this phrase a lot lately, "Trust the providence of God." You just don't know why things happen the way they happen all the time, but you've got to trust the providence of God. And so, if you're stuck in something, if you're there for a while and you're tired of being there, trust the providence of God. He might be preparing you for something later. Or maybe you're happy where you are, and you're like, "I don't want to leave." And the Lord says, "No, I need you to go over here and do this." And you're like, "But I don't want to leave." Trust the providence of God. See, a lot of times, we don't want to leave because we don't trust God. We're happy with what we got. We don't want to be out of our comfort zone too much. Trust the providence of God. We were talking about it. The RV finally started, and they got it off the island. It is gone. I don't know. I'm going to go visit in July, so I might see it again, but hopefully, it gets it started and moved to its new home. Before then, I'd never have to see it again. But we were talking about it. That thing sat here for over 18 months. It served its purpose for the first six months. We lived in it, but then it died and sat there in Berry's yard for 18 months.
We might miss it more than that.
Yeah, you might. You're seeing it every day. It felt like home when you pulled in and you saw the RV. But why did God leave it here? I don't know. There may be something that we find out later. That's the providence of God. But everything works out according to his providence, and so these men were sent to Antioch, but now they are being sent further on. These are the leaders, some of the leaders in Antioch that God's taken away and taken somewhere else. There's a church in Jordan, Montana, that had a pastor for 16 years that God called away to a different place. They took the same attitude. We are sending you. You're not leaving us. We're sending you. God has called you to something different. And so, that's the attitude of the local church. That's the attitude of Paul and Barnabas, and that's kind of what we see as they start this missionary journey. So now, I'm going to ask you three questions, and we can discuss these things. I'm going to give you the three questions, and then we can kind of see wherever God leads us to go. Number one, God is still calling people. So what kind of people is he calling? And who is he calling? Number two, as the church, how can we best prepare, call out, and send those he's calling? And number three, when we talk about a calling to ministry, what comes to mind, and what else is there? All right? So with that, we're going to say goodnight to our online friends. We're so glad that you've joined us, and we look forward for you joining us next week.